Franklin High School, thank you all for being here. This hearing for the local option levy is called to order. Welcome to everyone present. Tonight, first off, we'll have an overview from Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz and Executive Chief of Staff Stephanie Soden, and we'll follow that with public testimony. So if you wish to testify and you haven't already signed up, please find Kara. Where are you? Okay, right there. Perfect. Thank you so much. We look forward to this discussion. Deputy Superintendent Hertz?
Actually, I'm gonna start.
Oh, look at you.
Stephanie Soden. I feel like we're gonna, we should be singing a duet.
I know. It's kinda like the Dr. Phil Show.
Anyway, thank you for setting up the chairs. Good evening, Stephanie Soden, Executive Chief of Staff. We are here today for the third conversation in front of the board. We talked about the levy in the spring, earlier this summer, and then today, and then we're just gonna provide brief history and background information. So as you'll recall, it was passed, the current levy was passed in 2014 by 70% of the voters. The rate is $1.99 per thousand dollars of assessed property value. It was intended to support a minimum of 640 teaching positions. And should we continue the levy for the next five years, it could generate up to $112 million in school year 2024, '25.
So, just as a little history on what we've collected and the teachers that we've funded for the last four years of the five-year levy, you'll see that, beginning in 1516, we funded, with $76 million, a little over, 757 teaching positions. And that grew, the dollars continued to grow as values of housing or tax parcels continued to grow. And it got up to, by 1819, to 870 teaching positions. And so currently, the local option levy supports about 30% of teaching positions. Whoops, sorry. So projecting for 2019-20, we are projecting $96.1 million and estimated to fund about 800 teaching positions. Now, earlier in the summer when we presented to you, I estimated that in the coming school year, the levy would fund approximately 800 teachers. When we posted this presentation to the PPS website in advance of this meeting, we increased the approximation to 880 teaching positions. Giving further staff refinements, I feel more confidence stating 800 teaching positions. This is an estimate as we go into the school year.
So we're here before you today with our staff recommendation to refer the local option levy to voters at the current rate for another five-year term. So that ensures that our collections remain below the state threshold. You heard about that from the deputy last discussion. It preserves our allocation of state school fund revenues, and it sustains the equitable staffing model for schools. So we recommend, the question before voters should say, shall the district maintain teaching positions and educational programs renew existing levy, sorry, renew existing levy of $1.99 per thousand dollars of assessed value? And then I'll just close with some brief next steps. You are scheduled to consider the referral next Tuesday, August 13th. Later that week, a draft ballot title will be due to Multnomah County elections. The measure filing deadline is September 5th. Voters' pamphlets, statements are due September 9th, and the general election is scheduled for November 5th, 2019, should you decide to refer to the ballot.
Does that conclude your presentation?
That does.
Thank you so much. So we did have board discussion on this proposal, which is the same proposal that was recommended by staff, but I want to open it up for any board discussion before we, or questions, before we move on to public testimony?
So, just a question for staff on the final language. So appreciate the staff recommendation, assuming that's the final language. When will the final language, if we're gonna be voting on this next Tuesday, when will the final language be available to the public?
So our goal is to have this final and posted by end of the day Friday, no later than end of the day Friday of this week.
Okay, and then, follow up? And then, if we use the language, maintaining teaching positions and educational programming is the intent of the use of the funds from the local option, just to be clear, that could be either classroom teachers, or also teachers who are reading specialists, or academic intervention or acceleration teachers, but it could be a variety of educators who are engaged in sort of classroom activities with students.
So what you described is all teachers. Those are all teaching positions, and the educational programs would also, were some of the things that you described. One of the things that we're doing this fall is rolling out a strategic plan with specific strategies to support our board's district goals in helping improve student achievement. So that will be certainly in the consideration as we're going forward, but it is to be spent on teachers and educational programs.
And just to be clear, we have had the great privilege of operating with levy funds for the last many years in this district, and in our budgeting process for our general fund, we don't distinguish between what is funded through the levy and what is funded otherwise. So that's, all those decisions are made in service to our strategic goals, and the funds are aggregated.
Yes, I just, and I can also ask this question next week, but just wanna make certain that, since we haven't yet had our formal district goal-setting process, we haven't concluded it yet, that we have the flexibility within that, and also our upcoming budget, that we can align our resources behind our priority. And I don't know if that's a question for you or for the superintendent to answer, but I just wanna make sure that the educational side of the district and the superintendent feel they have the flexibility to utilize the resources along with the rest of our budget in service to the goals that we haven't yet adopted.
I would hope and intend to use that important investment to provide direct services to our students, whether that's a classroom teacher, or a reading specialist, or any other position that might support the educational programming and making sure all our kids have equitable opportunities.
Director Moore, did you have a question?
Can I just add something to what you said, and then I have a question? So the levy money is folded into the general funds, but it is accounted for separately. So we have a mechanism to track where those dollars are spent?
Yes, and we have provided that report out in our financial reports to the community.
Right. And that also is reported on to us externally from our Community Budget Review Committee, some of whom we may hear from this evening.
Okay, here's my question. So you had three bullet points supporting the staff recommendation to maintain the current rate, and one of them is that it preserves PPS's allocation of state school fund revenues. And my question is, is there a rate at which our allocation of state school funds would be jeopardized?
There are three different calculations that we go through to verify that our local option levies are below the three limits set for a local option levy. So there are three different ways, and with our current recommendation, we're not anticipating reaching any of those limits.
Okay, so this, it refers to the previous bullet point about the state threshold?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Given the reference to the community oversight of the expenditure of the funds, is that, that's contemplated to continue going forward?
Can you repeat your question? I missed the beginning.
It's the CBRC.
Go ahead, Director Moore, who served on the Community Budget Review Committee for many years.
I believe it is mandated that a levy be, that a district issuing a levy have an oversight committee of, from the community.
When it's in the ballot title? Yes, when it's in the ballot, exclamation statement, yes.
So, I guess my question is, I'm assuming we're contemplating doing that?
Yes.
Continuing that oversight? I mean, obviously, there's board oversight, but that's just an additional mechanism?
Having that annual report from our Budget Review Committee, yes.
So I believe the current levy states that all funds will be spent on classroom teachers. I think that's the wording. And if we're, are we talking about slightly widening that to include other certified teachers, but who are like a reading specialist who doesn't have an assigned classroom?
That is the intent of the language.
Okay. But still, all going to certified teachers?
Going to teaching positions, yes.
Any further discussion from the board, questions? All right, then we'll move on, and we'll hear from the public. Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Hertz. Ms. Huff, can you please call up the first speaker?
Yes, we have Maria Vales.
Can you hear me now? Great. It's my first time here, I'm quite excited. Thank you. And so, yes, I've been invited to just say a few words, I'll try to be concise. So, good evening, my name is Maria Vales. I am the Associate Director for SUN Community Schools at Latino Network. Three years ago, Latino Network was awarded funding to run extended-day programming for eight school sites. Five of these sites are in Portland Public School District. We have Cesar Chavez, Bridger K8, along with Rigler, Scott, and Kelly Elementary Schools. All these schools are currently titled and funded. Also, they receive full SUN funding from the county in order to meet the needs of their students and families. In collaboration with the county and Portland Public Schools, our SUN sites provide a myriad of services, as you probably know, such as academic and enrichment programs, adult classes, family nights, referrals to various resources such as energy and rental assistance. But most importantly, what we try to provide is positive adult role models for our students after school. Basically, anybody can go and participate in our programming, but we do have a particular focus for those who have been historically underserved and/or have limited resources. This year alone, the five Latino Network sites in PPS served approximately 1,400 students, and 700 of them attended 30 or more days of extended-day programming. In order to create and maintain this system of service, SUN managers depend highly on devoted community members with a passion for youth and family development, such as parents, college interns, and local organizations. However, one of our more impactful team members are indeed our teachers, our classroom teachers. And with these people in our extended-day team, the quality of our programming increases greatly. To begin, certified teachers already understand the school culture and the students when they come to pick up their kids in the after-school setting. They also come with a lot of tools and strategies to manage the classes, and because they've already established relationships with the students from the school day, teachers more easily than outside instructors can meet students where they are, whether it's time to do another multiplication problem, or even pronouncing new words. Finally, I see teachers doing a lot of fun activities with the students, knitting, Dungeons and Dragons, or just even simply trying out a new curriculum for the summer. And I just really appreciate how teachers give a little bit of their lives to the kids after school, and they're able to just simply have fun with them. So it's really great to just see how they relate to students, not only in their school day, but just taking that extra hour or two to ensure that we're moving the needle on student success, particularly on, particularly like reading interventions and math interventions that we do. Without them, I truly believe our programming would suffer, and I do hope that come August 13th, this option levy will be renewed. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have Ashley Henry.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ashley Henry, I'm the Executive Director of Business for a Better Portland. We're a membership organization, we have about 365, coming on 375, members, mostly from the business community, also supported by a number of nonprofits and community organizations. And we came together about two and a half years ago to provide a platform for businesses that wanted to engage civically but didn't have the opportunity to do so otherwise. And so, over the last two and a half years, we've been advocates for a wide variety of policy initiatives, primarily because our members see that in order for them to have a successful business, they need to live in a thriving community, they need to be doing business in a thriving community. And that is what really informed our advocacy for the Student Success Act. And we were really grateful that, last week, our third annual summer social, Representative Smith Warner attended and thanked our members for all of their hard work to promote and ensure the success of the Student Success Act. And it was really a heartening experience to witness my members, who, quite frankly, for the most part, haven't had that much engagement with elected officials and with the civic process, for them to hear directly from an elected official telling them that your voice really did matter, the communications that you did in advance of legislation really mattered. And the message that we shared was really quite simple, which is that in order for our businesses to succeed, we need to have an educated workforce. And the data continually show the correlation between education attainment and income levels, reduction of the likelihood of falling into poverty. There are some very, very strong business reasons for making these kinds of investments. And so, while we were not around when the levy was initially passed, we obviously see the renewal of the levy as a really critical adjunct to all the hard work that we and so many others put into the passage of the Student Success Act. And when our, when the companies that are our members are competing for talent around the country, that is one of the distinguishing features of, you know, of growing their companies is ensuring that they have strong talent recruitment and retention. And there is no doubt that the challenging nature of our education system has been a problem for some of our companies. And so, I just would encourage you to not slow down on the progress that you're making in PPS, and continue to provide these funds for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Irina Phillips.
I'm here to read the letter that CBRC prepared. Dear PPS Board of Directors, the Community Budget Review Committee, CBRC, would like to clarify its recommendation on the local option operating levy the board is considering referring to voters this November. As you know, this levy supports many hundreds of teachers across the district and is critical to helping contain class sizes. In our opinion, the passage of the Student Success Act was a big step in the right direction, but it's not enough to meet the minimum funding level identified in the quality education model. So our recommendation is to modestly increase the levy rate from the current $1.99 to $2.25 per thousand of assessed value to capture additional several million in revenue. Piper Jeffrey's middle-range estimate is enough to hire additional 100, 109 teachers. This marginal rate increase will greatly benefit all students across the district. We understand from our prior discussions with PPS finance staff and review of the Piper Jeffrey levy projections, that this additional millions would not require Portland to return money to the state under even the most aggressive growth assumptions. We are providing the history of the operating levy below, and I can send them by email if you want to see them. We note that Portland voters have always strongly supported the levy, especially during the general election. And a modest increase this November, particularly if it's coupled with a strategic communications campaign that emphasizes that's outsized and widespread benefit to students and families, will go well across the district. Thank you.
Next, we have Suzanne Cohen.
Thank you so much for time on the agenda this evening, and thank you, Board Directors, for dedicating this time to bettering and enhancing the opportunity for all our students, and welcome new board members. It's very exciting to see you all here, so thanks. I am Suzanne Cohen, I'm the President of the Portland Association of Teachers, and so I have the great honor and privilege of representing the over 4,500 educators that work in Portland Public Schools. And as you are probably all aware, Oregon has some of the worst class sizes in our nation, and depending on which figure you look at, it might be the third worst or the fourth worst, but we are at the bottom. Because of this levy, Portland Public Schools has been able to be better than the rest of the state, and I'd actually like to take this opportunity on behalf of our 4,500 educators to thank Portland voters for continuously supporting our schools, and it's what really, you know, makes Portland such a wonderful place to live and work. Despite this support, that does not mean that we have anywhere close to optimal class sizes, far from it. All our neighboring states have much lower class sizes, and when we talk to our educators or about what are the barriers to, you know, feeling successful and making their everyday lives for themselves and their students better, class size and caseload is always the issue. And we hear that a lot, actually, from families too, that class size matters a lot to everyone. So I'm here, obviously, to urge you to work on renewing this levy and making sure that those funds go towards teaching positions, but as well, and I think someone else said, like, "Don't stop the momentum," and I was gonna say, like, you know, let's never stop advocating for all the educational dollars that we absolutely need, so that every student in Portland Public Schools has the individualized attention that they absolutely deserve. So thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Kinsel, I'm the Oregon PTA President-elect currently, and I am the past president for Portland Council PTA. For our new board members, Portland Council PTA oversees the 76 PTAs that we have here in the Portland area, and we have a board of about 18 board members that help facilitate that. I was the president for four years prior to taking on my role with Oregon PTA. I signed a statement of support for the levy in 2014, and I've participated in advocating for education funding for the past 10 years, working on various bond campaigns for the district, as well as other issues at the state level. I ask the board to refer the local option renewal to the voters. The levy is absolutely vital for maintaining staff and educational resources, and a positive school experience for all of our students. Because of my role with PTA, I talk to parents all across our district, and one of the number one concerns that parents have is class size. It's one of the top issues that many of our schools here in PPS face. As a parent of three PPS students that attend schools here in southeast Portland, I have two at Creston and one here at Franklin, I can't imagine if we lost a third of the teaching staff in their buildings. It would be absolutely detrimental to their experience here at PPS. The levy funds the gap here in Portland for our students, and it's absolutely necessary, and I believe that the voters would be absolutely supportive of a renewal of the current rate. Thank you.
Scott Overton.
Good evening, and thank you for holding this public forum to let us weigh information in on the levy. My name is Scott Overton, I am the past Oregon PTA President, I still serve on the Portland Council as auditor, and I'm a member of the Grant High School PTA and a proud robotics mentor, so, go robotics teams. I would like to speak towards support of the levy. Certainly, we have been through this many times so far, and it is with the history of participation that I want to stress that reinstituting the current levy would certainly, at its certain, its current level, is an easier task for us at the voter box than raising. The other thing is, in the language of broadening your positions, I don't know that PPS has gained the trust to allow for having a more discretion in how they spend the money. So I warn you against too much broad use of the money. You have to build the trust before people will let you spend things the way you think is best, and I really don't think you have that, and it will be an issue, I think, if we go forward and certain parts of our community find out that they won't necessarily be classroom teaching positions. So I just warn you about being too, be careful about the language and about the intentions, so that when we, who will be there out building the support for this levy, will not meet resistance and will have a wonderful result, which I know we will have. So, full support from the PTAs, we will be there to bring this to the voters and support you, and I just encourage you to not make it too hard on us. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your future efforts. Jessica Colby.
Hello. Uh, hang on. There we go. Okay. Hi, my name is Jessica Colby, C-O-L-B-I-S-M-B-Y-Y, and thank you all for being here and allowing me to testify. My daughter will be entering her last year in PPS this month, she is a senior pupil. Over the years of her education, I have watched with dismay and disgust as the state of Oregon has deliberately and consistently underfunded public education, and we need to renew the levy to do what the state won't. I was with you for multiple board meetings, as you may remember. I know you, the work you've been doing, and the, I know the work you've put in, and that you've been doing the best with not nearly enough. I applaud the $30 million you moved over to Title I schools and the struggling schools, that was an awesome thing. But you should not need to strip admin to the bone, you should not need to cut teachers and staff elsewhere. PTAs should not need to ask for money from parents to fund more teachers to do it. That you and we had to do this, and more, with the current levy in place, makes me fearful of a future with no levy. In the 2019 school year, it will fund 880 teaching positions. Losing any positions will be difficult, losing 800. Losing 800 would be catastrophic. I can in no way imagine losing even a tenth the teachers supported by this levy, much less the 800 staff and teaching positions we will lose without it. I do have faith in the Multnomah County residents, and they have been generous to PPS. They have understood the need to shore up our deeply underfunded district, and I'm grateful for how they've stepped up, for my kid, for all the kids. It makes me feel good to live here, to do that. And I know the desire is there to continue this support. I, I hadn't really heard about the idea of upping the levy. If y'all think that that could pass, I'm all for it, but, you know, it's that weighing thing. I could go either way. I will support it either way. In any case, a levy. We need it. Thank you.
My name is Roger Krishner. I'm a, a parent of students that have graduated Portland Public Schools. I'm a Portland Public School graduate. In one way or another, my family has been related to this school district for over 50 years. And over those, that span of 50 years, never has my household not voted for a levy. I encourage you to renew the levy and, and work for its passage. As Director Moore will attest from her previous service on CBRC, it's very important that your explanatory information be well-vetted and not promise something that CBRC cannot certify and verify to you that the funds were appropriately utilized. We've had times pass where we had to work diligently to try to ascertain the information, the data that was, would support that verification that we submit to you annually. So, so that's very important to, that, and I, I think if one reads the proposed ballot title carefully, all the, all the information is there if it's read carefully. I wonder if there's some way of wording it that just makes it abundantly clear to taxpayers that as, if you accept the staff recommendation to maintain the existing rate, that, that it will not raise any taxes, your individual taxes, over and about what the individual taxpayer is paying at the present time. Only barring the fact that if the property itself has increased in value. And so, I see the economist up there shaking his head at me. And so, so anyway, I wear two hats tonight. A CBRC member for some number of years, and I've worked on all the levies during that span of time, and will work for the passage of this one. And I'm also wearing my PTA hat. And as I have always reminded the Board, PTA is the largest constituency of the Board, save for the students themselves. And we are pledged to support the levy and will work for its passage.
And you're also wearing your Franklin Strong hat.
We have Peyton Chapman.
Chair Konstant, Vice Chair Brim Edwards, Superintendent, and new Board members particularly. As a Principal, I'm sad to see that Maxine's not here tonight, because I would have liked to say hello to her, too. Peyton Chapman, Principal of Lincoln High School. I'm also a parent of a PPS alum and a parent of two children. And one thing I know is that Portlanders care deeply about our schools and the experiences that our children have in our schools. And I also agree that beyond just caring, our education system is our most vital economic driver. So it's just smart to invest in our schools and our future. I've always believed in the Coalition of Central Schools that said that no teacher should have more than 80 students. And you can look to other countries. We partner and host exchange students, and they tell us routinely that their teachers have no more than 80 students, their high school teachers, maybe sometimes up to 100. Our teachers in Portland public schools at the high school level have sometimes 180 students each. We spent a lot of time this morning at our, our Leadership Institute, really talking about doing the deep work around equity and serving all kids, and we talked a lot about relationships. And the fact that, you know, students don't care what our teachers know until they know that our teachers care. How does a teacher build a relationship with 180 different students that they only see for nine months? We have to maintain these 800 teaching positions. Our students need more relationships, better relationships with more adults who care in their lives, not fewer. We need to reduce the student-to-teacher ratio for their overall loads, but also for the class sizes. It's very hard to have interactive, engaging classes if your class sizes go over 30. And they're near that now. We need to be heading in the opposite direction. We also need to have the opportunity to retain our newer and more diverse hires. It is very hard to invest in our new teachers and then lose 800 teaching positions. Those are the teachers we're going to lose. So we need to keep them, and, and often, those are some of our more, most diverse teachers that we've recruited to come to our district or even our state. And I know this firsthand from a hiring perspective, because in 2011, when a neighboring district failed to renew their levy, I capitalized on their failure and hired one of our best physics teachers and one of our best chemistries teachers, because they couldn't bear having teach, class sizes of 40 and having overall loads of 240, because that wasn't going to be good teaching. That district had trained their teachers in the next generation of science standards. We were able to then at Lincoln pilot the NGSS for science, because we could benefit from their losing the levy. If we don't pass our levy, I know other districts nearby, and we could all name them, who would be taking our best teachers that we've just invested all this money in, in recent years, our diverse and our newly-trained teachers. So I urge you to remember how much Portlanders care about our schools and our education, the investments that we've made. There's really nothing, there's no more crucial investment, and I believe Portlanders will, will come out and have that 70% again positive showing that we saw in 2014. Thank you.
Brenda Fox.
I'm Brenda Fox. I'm the Principal of Atkinson K-5. I have had the pleasure of being a PPS student. I went to Maplewood when it was a K-8. I graduated from Wilson High School. I'm also the daughter of a teacher in Portland Public Schools, so Portland is very near and dear to me. And as we just heard from Principal Chapman, in 2014, 70% of Portland voters voted for the levy. That's in a city where approximately two-thirds of the households don't have a K-12 student. That says a lot about the investment that our families want to make for education, and I urge that we continue that with a new levy. I want to take you back to what it was like to be a kindergartner, maybe? And as I think of last fall at Atkinson, and as the, the parents gathered, I had horns for those that were really excited to have their kindergartner start their new adventure, and tissues for those that were a little sad about the day. But when I walked down the hall and looked, and there were 29 five-year-olds in my immersion kindergarten class, that's a lot of little people. And it's a lot of little people with a lot to learn, and it's a lot to ask of a teacher. I also think about my time as a middle school teacher and principal. When students are coming in significantly behind grade level, and teachers have so much catch-up to do in such a little time, and their caseloads are so large, and we know the importance of knowing students by name, it makes it really difficult for them to do the hard work of helping students make the gains they need to make, so that they can receive a diploma when they graduate from high school. I also think about this last spring, when the staffing allocations came out, and we were talking about four or five blends as part of a regular staffing allocation. We're also talking about giving a guaranteed and viable curriculum, guaranteeing that every student has access to a curriculum that is viable. How do we do that when we're blending four or fives in some schools and not in others? It's important that we maintain the level of staffing that we have. PPS has done a phenomenal job. I looked at the numbers this morning. The staffing allocations were originally meant for, I believe it was, 750 positions, and they will do 800 this year. PPS has used the money wisely and well, and I encourage the Board to go out for another levy.
Thank you so much, Principal Fox.
I'm Thomas Lanham, and this is my son Francis. He'll be starting school in a few years. I've got one in, starting first grade in PPS. I'm also on the Community Budget Review Committee. And I wanted to reiterate a couple of points that were, excuse me, raised earlier. The discussion here tonight is kind of funny. Renewing this option is really not, it's not really a decision, right? We're all going to do that, we all agree. There's no one that disagrees. Any one of you that votes otherwise is, you know, a damn fool, right? So, really, the discussion ought to be about the rate. Is $1.99 per 1,000 AV the correct rate, or should it be something a little more aggressive? 2.25 is what the CBRC is unanimously recommending. We reviewed your Piper Jeffrey report. We've had a conversation with staff, and we feel strongly the community would support this. It's 109 additional teachers, notwithstanding the Student Success Act passing, which is a wonderful thing. After years and years, decades in fact, of other investment, now is the time to double down and really do something about the class sizes. The last renewal didn't pass by 70%. It passed by 72.4%. That's a significant, it's not, we don't want to round that down. Let's, let's keep that fully in, in the focus here of this discussion. In 2006, there was a 50 cent increase in the, in the, in the rate. 63% of voters approved that. In 2011, there was another 50 cent increase, and that was supported by 58% of voters. And that's the lowest support that this levy's ever had. So I want to encourage all of you to have the courage to double down and really, really do something courageous right now, which is to bump the rate. It's an additional $11.7 million, according to your consultant, spread across tens of thousands of properties. It's just not that material of an increase for an individual homeowner, but it would make a gigantic difference for teachers in the district. Thank you.
Thank you for your service on CBRC. And there's no one here who wishes to testify who has not signed up? All right. Thank you so much for being here. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to us. We will now adjourn and return to the band room for a work session on our strategic goals. Thank you so much.